Hold a meeting order, roll call please.
Mr. Speaker?
President.
Mr. Speaker?
Here.
Mr. Speaker?
Here.
Mr. Speaker?
Here.
Mr. Speaker?
Here.
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnersville News Courier-News and the Star-Ledger filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 12th, 2017. Please all rise for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this evening we have presentations. Item number four A, our downtown revitalization committee. Have our planners here. I'm Bonnie Sellers. Would you like to introduce everyone?
Yes, can I just start?
Sure, yes.
Okay, great. Hi, good evening, everyone. We're gonna stand here in the corner so that we're talking to the public while we're talking to the council members as well. So, Bonnie Sellers, I'm a member, chair of the Downtown Revitalization Committee, we're appointed by the mayor. The other committee members are here, does everybody know Edward Jeff Paul, Sam, Pat Kugner. And I want to introduce Topology because, as everyone knows, we just engaged them for a study. And here is Phil and also Chris and Golda over there. And Phil is the brains behind the revitalization of Marstown over the last year and Summit.
Oh, if you like it.
He's from this area and he's done lots of smaller towns too and we're really lucky to have had them and worked with them on this study. And they're fabulous and I think the fruits of the study will become very clear as we talk. So, a thought before we get into this, and they like color, as you guys can see. So, before we get into this, I just want to remind everyone, we were here in August and in August, we agreed, the council agreed, that we would do a study of the Quimby Lane area and that we would come back and make a presentation and look into what the next steps will be vis a vis that area. So, you're gonna hear a lot tonight about there's a problem in Burnersville because of various things, downtown deteriorated, yet we have many prospective solutions. You're gonna hear a lot tonight about the term request for proposal. Request for proposal or RFP is, I'm gonna use Jack's definition because it was so great, it's a way to have a conversation with private enterprise without binding the town in any way. So, all we're talking about today is having a conversation with private enterprise to invest money in our town. And I think that this is really important and it'll come up over again in our little presentation tonight. We're not asking the council to do anything, we're not asking the council to spend any money, we're not asking for any actions to be taken other than to send out the request for proposal, which came out of the study we've done over the last three months to find out if private enterprise wants to invest in our town. We've also spoken to all of the property owners on Quimby Lane, most of them more than once, all of them know exactly what we're saying today. So, there's been no secrets, it's complete transparency. Another thing you'll see tonight is a lot of different plans and, again, consistent with transparency, these are fun plans, they show what could be. Topology did a plan and the Penn people have come back with some preliminary plans. We're not asking private enterprise to adopt any of these plans, we're not asking the town to adopt any of these plans, we're just showing what could be done if there's any action on Quimby Lane. And I think you'll be excited by the potential. We are looking at something that has tremendous urgency. As you all know, there was a zoning ordinance that was passed by the council, the council had to pass it because of the state and it creates affordable housing in Quimby Lane. So, Quimby Lane is going to have eighty units of housing if we don't step in and do something. So, here, we're trying to propose ideas that private enterprise might latch onto that will make it exciting and lower density. So, at the end of all this, I hope you all are as excited as we are, you'll see the tax revenues are better, there's something for everyone in our plan and lots of revitalization. So, let me just show you what the table of contents is gonna be. We're gonna go through these topics one by one, we're all gonna speak and we welcome the public's reaction and, of course, the council's as well.
Guys, we could open up that second door also, so you have more space.
Oh.
You can't hear, yes.
I'm sorry?
No, just speaking to them in the back, yeah.
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, again, why are we here tonight? We're here tonight for the council to approve the release of the RFP. So, just to be clear, this is the end of what was already approved in August. You approved to spend fifteen thousand dollars on the study, you approved to come up with a request for proposal, and now we want to send it out. So, it's just the continuation of everything that was already discussed in August. And so, in August, we said, you know, the downtown has deteriorated, we've said that the retail is not as vibrant as it used to be, that we have no architectural standards, that there are too many empty stores. And, you know, those of us who've lived here, like me, for twenty-five years, we love this place and we want everything to be as vibrant as it can be. Property values have declined, we talked about this ad nauseam, and millennials are not moving in. There is a bad commute to Manhattan, we think this can be fixed, but not the topic for today, something else for our committee. But we think there are a few problems, we'd like to attack it. So, because of the survey, because of what the public said, because of our understanding the eleven hundred respondents, we started with Quimby Lane. And today, we're here to talk about the redevelopment of Quimby Lane. So, I'll pass it on.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Folks, you guys can move up if you want, so anybody in the hallway wants to come in.
Come on, everybody, come on.
Yeah.
All right, good evening, I'm Paul Sedgley, part of the committee, and I also sit on the zoning board in town. Been thrilled to be part of this committee. A lot of times, people set up for committees, you just kind of meet and then you get together again, you meet. This team works. Bonnie, we work. And we put a lot of time into this, we're trying to figure out the issue. There's no easy answer. But, let's just take a step back of why we're doing this and what we're looking to do. Bonnie just talked about August, but this dated back to over a year ago. A survey was put together and a survey went out to every resident, we emailed it out, we put on the borough website, we put postcards out. There's roughly about three thousand-ish households in the borough, we had over eleven hundred responses, close to forty-five hundred written comments about what's important to them, what's important to our town. I think we all know it and agree it's a problem. Do we agree there's a problem?
Yeah.
And we have to do something, right? But, we didn't just want to be one of those groups that kind of just went in a conference room or just met someplace. This has been totally out in the public and being transparent. So, we did the survey and we gathered your feedback over the winter, that was January, February. We held the town hall at the high school, well-attended, triple-digit in attendance. When we played back to survey feedback, we had some planners giving you stand-up working stations, there are five stations that all gathered feedback as to what's important to you, and we simulated all of that. Then we came back and figured out, well, what does that all mean and what do we do with it? Well, then, that's where we came back in August, shared with the public and the council an update of what we've been doing. And that's where we said, hey, we need some professionals to help us with that, and that's where it led us to the Topology firm, who has had a track record of success revitalizing towns and making them more vibrant. The communities that they have worked in, one, they've been successful and they're very strong, and I'm not, don't talk about that. But then, on the other side of it, two is, they've all stabilized their real estate batteries and some of them are hot. You list a house in some of those towns and vary their price points and they go. Here, they're sitting for many, many months. We all know the story here, not gonna hash that out. So, when we conducted the survey, we asked, what did you want? What's important to you as residents? What would make everyone pleased about what we're doing? Should we even do this? Ninety-eight percent of the eleven hundred responses said, this is important, folks, doing nothing is not an option, we need to do something. They said it was important. Well, what does that mean? We need improved aesthetics? I think we can all agree that it's not exactly eye appealing in that zone, right? We're looking for more outdoor activities. Again, when you think about your town, in your borough, it's a place we love, I love it here, I enjoy it here, but there are some things that are lacking. But the thing is, though, there's become a point in time, as my family grows up and ages out, I'm gonna wanna sell my home. Who's the future buyer? As much as this is our town and a borough, this is a business, folks, and we need to have a product that people want to buy. Right now, we have a product, people aren't buying, all right? Houses are sitting a long time, they're not buying our product. Who's our future buyer? The Gen Xers and the millennials are the future buyers. What are they looking for? They're looking for outdoor activities in the downtown, make it easy for them, all right? Millennials are future buyers. Again, we gotta be strategic, folks, we're thinking ten years out, fifteen years out, twenty years out. What we're doing now is going to affect our borough twenty years from now. Taking this hand down the road is not an option. And this is what you told us. Millennials want to play where they live. Make it convenient for them, and that's what it's all about. We didn't really select Quimby, that came up repeatedly in the forty-five hundred written comments inside the survey. It's a central location, there's a lot of older properties over there that are lacking recent improvements. The public office, the post office, is a publicly owned property and it is underutilized. It is underutilized in terms of what it can be and in terms of revenues it brings into our borough. Bonnie, you talked about a recent zoning overlay that we could put in up to eighty residential units in there for affordable housing. That was not our choice, we have to do this. Towns across the state of New Jersey have to address affordable housing. The challenge that we have here is left to its own, developers can come in and do what they want on their terms, which may not necessarily be beneficial to our town. As we talked about in August, we said we want to lay out our terms and our desires based on residents' feedback, about what the residents want and what they see as defined as success. And we're also finding in that entire zone, taking a look at the tax revenues, again, underutilized for the area and particularly for a downtown area. So, what have we done? We retained the firm's Topology and worked with the University of Pennsylvania to come up with some design concepts and ideas. And that's what was approved by the council and we thank you for that, and folks have worked really, really hard to get this thing ready. Because, again, this is not about the town honing up money to do all this, this is about engaging private developers and bringing in their money to take this to the next step. So, we're not asking for any money. So, when that was approved in August, that also approved, that also approved not just Topology, but also the University of Pennsylvania School of Design students. These are graduate students that came in, it was great coming in here. We had roughly fifty, sixty of them here. Phil lived in this room, they came in on a bus. You pink kids did not come in a yellow bus, trust me on that one. They came in and put in a nice, in a nice ride. Well, they came up here, they were right, they're engaging, the wheels were turning about idea that I'm excited to see, and Phil's gonna share this with you, some of the ideas. And again, as Bonnie was saying at the opening, this is not what it's going to be, these are ideas to steer the thinking in terms of what the residents said and the survey and the feedback about what you all wanted. All right? But what does this mean to us? This is about developing public and private spaces to create an experiential nightlife of restaurants and other retail activities, as well as vibrant spaces for the daytime for family activities supported by parking. There's a lot in that sentence. But what's it all about? Businesses cannot be successful unless there's what?
Parking.
And?
People.
People, right? I can't tell you how many times I've walked outside on one of our stores, whether it's on Anderson or on Alcott Square, and I step out there, I look to my right, I look to my left, and count that many people? None. There's no foot traffic. It's how do you create an environment? Sure, we can say that there are things that we can do to incent landlords or disincent landlords, the reality of this, none of that helps the business on to be successful. None of it. What makes it successful?
Money.
People. That's what it's all about, it's all about people. So, how do you create that environment for people? Right? So, when you add more people, what do they, what typically have in their pocket or in their purse? Wallets, right? So, by having wallets in there, we took a look at it and said, based on what we can develop, these are conceptual numbers. And we work with the tax assessor here in town. Roughly speaking, the borough brings in roughly two hundred thousand dollars in tax revenues from the Quimby Zone.
Excluding the rooftop.
Excluding the rooftop, correct, thank you for clarifying. We estimate here, basically, we can bring in one million towards the town to help us. Now, everyone's concerned about taxes and I applaud the council and many other leaders in the town about controlling our expenses, but at some point in time, you can control them just so much, we have a revenue challenge and this will help us on the revenue side. Because if we don't have the revenue side, who's gonna pay the bills? Who?
Homeowners.
Homeowners, all of us. So, what will happen here is, when you can't cut anymore, it's either you're cutting services, which will deteriorate the value of the town, or you're raising taxes to make up for it. So, it's gotta come from somewhere, so we have to figure out ways to generate more revenue. So, to put this in perspective, that's one million, so it's roughly eight hundred thousand incremental, on a top line, including the schools and all that, around twenty-six million for the town. Okay? So, that's a meaningful number, folks, that is a meaningful number. And by doing this, you derive a revitalized downtown and it makes our product. Remember going back to the business, what are we selling? We're selling our town to future owners, future buyers, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. This is being strategic and it's improving the desirability of Burnersville so that people want to buy. When people want to buy, what happens? Stabilizes real estate values and hopefully increases. And when you increase the real estate values, that also helps the borough overall. So, with that, that's really what we're trying to do and why. And based on the comments, Quimby was the most written zone that was noted by the residents. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Phil Robinson, one of the brightest on this plan in the state, I'm thrilled that you've been working with us. So, Phil, it's all yours.
Great, thank you, Paul. And thank you, everyone, for your time tonight. I think you have a great town. I know that there were some things said about the challenges that are happening here. Somebody that doesn't live here, I grew up around here, I'll just tell you, when I'm walking around, I, they're not immediately apparent to me, I see beautiful, a beautiful downtown, your halls are beautiful. So, it's a privilege to be here and I thank you for the opportunity, all of you. So, I, like I said, I grew up around here, I'm from Morris County, Brooklyn, Randolph. My first job was in the next town, an over summer job, was the Proteus Guy at Kings in Mendham. So, I've been through Burnersville most of my life. I think I'm pretty familiar with it and I've now had the privilege of coming back as a professional at this point in my life and working on the towns of my childhood, places like Marstown and Summit and Chatham, South Orange, these are all client towns we're working with. Each of them are very different and each of them need different challenges and sort of need different solutions. So, when we took a look at Quimby Lane, we took, we looked at it with fresh set of eyes, but using kind of best practices. And I think, you know, the two things that are interesting about what I do, why I like my job, is that we bridge kind of two gaps, two gaps, right? One between all this stuff and like, how does that equate to like engineering and parking and traffic and how do you lay a site out? Like, yes, we know what the value proposition is, but what does it mean in terms of physical design, in terms of real challenges? So, that's some of the things I'm gonna talk about, God bless you. And then, some of the others is the public and private sector, right? So, we're here, a room full of people, really care about community and really want, you know, some folks want something different. And that something different probably will happen because the zoning isn't in place. So, how do you, as the municipality, work to sort of steer the private sector in the most effective way possible to get the best deal for yourselves? And that's where I look at my primary responsibility is to all of you, to all of you, to get the best deal for Burnersville at the end of the day, and that can mean many different things, right? It doesn't have to mean just financial. So, ultimately, we took all of the stuff that everybody just said about what are we on, what are our objectives, what are our policy goals, what's our philosophy, and started to boil it down into what must this area have to accomplish those things? So, restaurants and food, this is...
Folks, if we could move up, excuse me, people in the hallway. Joe, you wanna move in?
So, retail, sorry, just a second.
That's okay. It'll be a long night, I won't say.
So, retail's going through a lot of changes in, throughout the country, throughout the world, certainly throughout New Jersey right now. Some things we cannot ship through Amazon and that's like a warm meal and a night out and whatever. So, restaurants are the thing that are still successful in downtown retail environments and they're going to be attractors to people, like they are in other places, that get people out of their cars, onto the sidewalk, and maybe they'll stop at the frame shop next door when they're going out to dinner or something like that. High-quality residences, one of the things that we've heard from the survey, one of the things that I'm seeing in multiple places, a lot of people, I think, spent a lot of time thinking that apartments are for young people or something like that, but in all these buildings that are being built around the state right now in places, ever from Marstown to Maplewood to Chatham to Summit, more than half are moved down buyers, that people want to live in downtown environments, that they want a place that they don't have to get in their car and drive everywhere. And so, we, and obviously residential is part of this because of the affordable housing obligation. So, we needed to include residences and what we wanted to do is create a variety and not just have it be one size fits all, to create a variety of residential building types, to respect the Mindbrook, what a resource. I had to like literally climb down behind buildings to get to it. This is the story of a lot of natural resources in kind of urban or downtown environments is they sort of end up in the back, they end up hidden, but you have something great there that we think that we can uncover and celebrate as part of the community. Architecture, that's consistent with the Burners Inn, I think that there's this amazing unique architecture in Burnersville, it's like this sort of like mountain house style architecture. It's beautiful and, not to say that we're doing mountain house architecture, I'm just, that was just an aside, but it needs to, it needs to fit in and it really is unique and it has its own identity. All the buildings here, I can pretty much pick them out of a picture if you show them to me that they belong here. And that what we want to do is create things that will belong and that you'll all be able to celebrate. Twelve units of affordable housing, that's a legal obligation based on a settlement agreed that was done between the borough and Fairshire Housing Center. Substantially more subsurface parking between Clermont Road and Alcott Square. And that what you'll see is, we came up with a plan to start connecting pedestrians through Quimby Lane to make it a journey, to make it a destination, and to make it a place where that could be your starting point of the night out in Burnersville. So, you'll see the way we did that. And you're around programming public space, not all public spaces are created equal, right? I know that maybe another big thing on the agenda is an acquisition of open spaces, at least the rumor that I heard back there. You know, twenty acres in one location can accommodate same amount of people as a quarter acre in another location, in a more downtown location. So, really strategically placed, strategically designed, open space that can be used by restaurants and for programming purposes and to come up with a way to get somebody out there hosting and organizing these events, so everybody doesn't have to show up to council meetings to have fun. We can do at the side for some next time. And we did, through a relationship that I have with a firm, we're looking at direct bus service to New York City. This is not part of my proposal tonight, it's just a point, a point there. This can happen anywhere without the bus service, but we are working to explore and to try to come up with a proposal. So, the other thing that we do is sort of a next step after we look at sort of our philosophy is, are there other places that have done this well? And I wanted to share with you some of the photographs that inspired us, that inspired our designers to move ahead. So, this is Daventry and Kingdom, most of these are in Europe, which, you know, I'm always like a little on the fence about, like, do we want to show up in these that are more local or whatever? But I think that what you have here in this town is, there's no other downtown with this sort of topography, with this sort of history, this is more like a European village than it is like a typical New Jersey town. You know, I'm sorry, so I had to go far to find the right examples. So, this is Daventry, intimate public spaces, that these are shops, and these might be the backs of these shops, who knows, maybe there's streets on the side like Alcott Square or, you know, Clermont, but these are the backs and they have these areas that people can walk through and stuff like that. So, we love this idea of double loaded retail and dual frontage retail with spaces that can be informal or even closed off in the back if the flower shop wants to have a flower show or whatever flower shops do. The river, using the river as an asset, can we, how close can we get people to the river? Again, to let them reconnect with the river, there's something really special about that place, really relaxing and comfortable and it's just such a unique natural resource to have here. So, this was an image we found, I'm not sure exactly where it was from, of Dining by River. This is Mittunwald, Germany, another closed pedestrian street, you can see that there's vehicles in the distance, but this is a closed street where there's retail in sort of a village setting. This is just outdoor dining in a public space, you kind of get the idea that we were like looking for places with people, it was more about people and the quality of experience and the quality of the spaces that we were creating, we started there rather than looking at different buildings and different architecture and stuff like that. And then, this one's in Princeton, so maybe another uncommon New Jersey town. This is in the middle of Palmer Square, where a place where people can go and take time out, you don't have to buy something, but just go relax, you know, with your family and it's a passive recreation. This is Vale Village, Colorado, this is Paul's big precedent, it's like, move down. And so, this is a walkable area, you know, a resort town, but I think that this idea of hospitality in resorts and stuff like that, like the reason that people go to Vale for a few hours in the weekend are the same reasons that somebody would come down and do a night out in Burnersville, just to kind of get that. And I think what we're seeing more and more is like a hospitality-based approach to a lot of things, offices, residential. So, how do we think about that? So, all these precedents were instructive in shaping the design and in terms of creating that RFP about, you could design a great place, but if it's not, if the management plan is not there, if the management infrastructure is not there, then great, the tree falls and the woods, sort of idea. So, this is the plan we came up with. We worked with an architect and a landscape architect, you know, real architect and a landscape architect, building architect. And these are people that we partner with consistently, Common Ground Design, you're right in Nashville. So, what we did here, what, I'm gonna walk you through the plan, okay? So, first thing to know about this area is that the topography here varies like more than fifteen feet from Mill Street to the Mindbrook, to Mindbrook Road. So, that, right now, it's just, Quimby's, maybe people don't see it as a steep street, especially around here, there's a lot of steep streets, but Quimby's relatively steep in the kind of grade that it has. But we said, and we were aspirational, that's what our task was, dream big, just, you know, let's, let's really think about what would be a full total transformation. So, what this plan involves is starting off with that topography and creating two planes, two grades. You have an upper grade, which is at grade with Mill Street, and then you have a lower grade, which is at grade with Mindbrook. And then, basically, you create like a plateau or a podium underneath, and it's really underneath, let me try to make this work, underneath this entire area here are the partner spaces. So, you would come in from Mindbrook, come up Quimby, and there'd be a garage door right here, because this whole area is on a raised plaza in through here and it's underneath all of this. We took into consideration when we worked on this, where the property lines are, where the different ownership is, and made it so it can be phased. When you do big infrastructure like this, that's always the risk is like, well, if you blow your exit basket and you don't have a participant, then, you know, you do that. So, we do think, and there are other variations that we came up with, this is the most aspirational for sure. You have the Mindbrook here, Alcott Square, just to orient everybody, Mill Street. And then, so, one of the other things was rethinking the circulation patterns like I had mentioned. So, this area up here would be like a plaza street for pedestrians, there could be retail along the street on any of these frontages in through here. And to start to create these little passageways from Alcott Square, from Mill Street, this here exists, I think people from, some people on our committee even know that, that there's this area along the movie theater and there's a mural there. But how do you get people into here, through the, through the block, and then, there is a bridge there already over the Mindbrook, which is probably wouldn't be built today, but since you have it, use it. And then, this area is a little lower as you get down closer toward the river, so there'd be some steps or ramps that would take you from this higher elevation down into here. And that there could be, we imagined, like the idea of double-story retail along this frontage where you could come into a restaurant up on this street, walk down an internal staircase and have, you know, dinner out by the, by the river. staircase and have, you know, dinner out by the river. Again, all aspirational. And I'll tell you why I think it was important to be aspirational under the circumstances. Diverse housing types, so mostly apartments or flats, whatever you want to call them. But here you have like a carriage house kind of building, here you have what could be like ground stones or townhomes. In through here, these are like the little things that you put in to create texture and not just have these big kind of unexpanded or expanded expanses. We're showing all the black building footprints or buildings that exist. We did meet with the property owners, I think all of them, not me, when I say we, Bonnie and the committee, but we did meet with the owners, I of the hotel. And they had expressed an interest in coming up with area for a larger ballroom. So we thought about, you know, maybe there's a way to expand over some of that single-story retail connected to the other facility. And that this could also, this area down here could also be associated with the hotel, maybe their, what were they called, those kind of units?
Surface.
Surface apartments. So maybe there are units that, you know, could have the amenities, that kind of housekeeping amenities that a hotel could provide, just a different kind of lifestyle. And that's, yeah, that's really it. A lot of great open spaces, we'll say in a minute that like 40, 50% of this plan is dedicated to people space, open space, that you have the area down near the river, which is like this very natural quiet space. You have all this little interstitial space in here for a plaza that would be more like outdoor coffee, whatever. The same thing with the street up in through here. We were careful to maintain access, service access and deliveries to the existing buildings. So what we have, what this shows, and really again, this was a test to see how many units, how does it lay out? When the zoning was adopted, zoning is done with a broad brush. It's like, you know, you do 30 units an acre, 36 units an acre, whatever it is, but how did, like what does that actually mean? And when I was brought into this project, we were like, okay, we're going to do the zoning. Nope, zoning was already done, it's already there. So somebody could, in theory, acquire any of these properties and build on a prorated basis to these standards. And there's really not a lot of controls, and there's not a lot of controls that municipalities can put on things like architecture. You can cajole, that's the word that the court uses, that you could cajole around architecture. But, and I'm a person, a planner who wrote a form-based code for Maristown, which is all about architecture. It's difficult legally speaking. But going through this process and engaging them and coming up with a design first and inviting them to say, here's what we came up with, you know, are there things that you'd like to come up with? You have a public property, which is a huge asset as a way to, as a carrot to bring folks in. I think people will want to do here. I think that people want to invest here in these types of buildings and the things that we've shown. So what we did was, what we have is a proof of concept that shows, you know, that we could get maybe over 300 partner spaces here if everything, all things go as planned. This is again, the aspirations to the top of the world for this area. And, you know, I would recommend to you, the council, to test the market, and that's really what we're here to do. I don't have all the answers, but I do know the best way to kind of spur this dialogue and to maintain the kind of leverage that you need to negotiate on an equal playing field with developers and investors. And I think that what you've done here is the smart proactive thing to do, which is creating an RFP, coming up with your own design, saying this is what we want to see, and then having people come back and do it. If you wait, if you wait for them to come, you never know what you're going to get. So I don't know if I missed anything.
That was great.
And by the way, you have such a great community, it's been amazing. I've never worked in an environment quite like this. Usually I'm working for councils and mayors, but I've never seen people that have been so dedicated to the town. And it really is such a resource, so thank you all for letting me part of this.
We're not finished yet, so there's a little bit more. At our last meeting, we talked about University of Pennsylvania students doing some plans to see what was available in their brains for potential for the town. And while they're still doing it, I thought we'd get a sneak preview of where they are. And they just really, really talented. So we had a very big class set up to work on this project, and the school is very supportive, and they're turned out to be eight teams. So eight teams are competing for a small prize to win the design, which we may or may not do anything with. But we selected the two that we like the best so far, and we wanted to share them with you. And I think that what's interesting about them is the next two designs you're going to see don't look like this design. They are totally different, and it just shows the potential that this area of town has. So as I said, still in progress, but take a look at this plan. So this, oh, wait, can we just go to this one? Yeah. So this plan is a, is a bunch, hold on, one second. The red one.
And then just hold it.
Oh, okay. All right. Look at the, so this plan does a town square in the middle of Quimby Lane. Right there is a big place for people to congregate, a place for the farmer's market, a place for Christmas fair, a place for pumpkin painting, a place for, an ice skating rink, a place for anything, it's very big. And the new structures are around it, and the bottom structure being an expansion of the hotel, the hotel wants to put more rooms in. So basically surrounding a big town square, a place where everyone can congregate for activities that are planned or not planned, and then there's retail on the bottom floor and there's residential up above. Now, on this side is a large park. So basically where the brook is, is a park around it for passive activities or active activities as planned by whomever wants to use the park. In this plan, interestingly, the Penn students did underground parking as well, and they raised up the area. So it's a pretty interesting thing. And basically what this group said is Quimby Lane has to become part of the rest of the town. So let's really open that up so it's connected. To me, this is really exciting, I think this is doable, I think these students have kind of nailed it. And it's, it's very pedestrian-oriented, which is I think what we want for the success of the town, of the downtown.
Bonnie, I have a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
See the corner on Clermont, and what is that area there?
Oh, oh, sorry.
The single-family house.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's a single-family house that's still existing.
Is it, oh.
We're not doing anything with it.
And then the area above that is more square?
Everything on the left side along Clermont is what's there today, so that's exactly what's there today.
Okay.
Now let me show you another Penn plan. So this is the second Penn plan. While the other one was a square that was open, this is two streets, like a cross, look at the cross there and here, two totally pedestrian streets. And along those pedestrian streets are retail and restaurants, and then housing up above. This plant did a lot less housing than the previous one did. And then it did a very interesting thing, it took Quimby Lane and it turned it here so that all the backs of the stores on Route 202 have access to Quimby Lane that way, which is really creative and something we hadn't thought about before. Also, this axis is the 202 axis, so anyone coming up and down can really literally look into the revitalized Quimby Lane. And this plan also did a huge amount of park, as you can see, the largest amount of park. And these are just starting points, but I think these kids kind of nailed it in terms of helping us to understand what the potential is. And again, a developer who might read the request for proposal and respond might say, you know, look, I talked to this property owner, I talked to that property owner, only some of them want to participate. And maybe they don't do the whole thing, or maybe the whole thing gets phased. We're open to whatever private enterprise would produce, but by having so many different plans, the one that Phil did and these two others, you can see how phasing or partial redevelopment can really work in these plans. So we're very excited about the potential.
Let me move on to town.
Okay.
Just, what will happen to the post office, is that private plan?
You know, that's a great question, and I should have thanked any of the shops that are there too. Okay, so the guy who owns the post office who couldn't be here tonight, he is dying to sell that property. I mean, maybe I'm over exaggerating, let me say, he said he's extremely enthusiastic for working with a developer who might make a proposal.
And again, this is at a proposal position tonight, we don't want to get into three hours of questions and answers here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a proposal right now, and it's just showing the work that the committee did. We'll establish a form of communication where you could send further, you know, comments and any questions to the committee, okay? Many couldn't attend, they're at home watching this on video also.
Oh, fantastic, great.
Yes, thank you.
So the shop next to that, the one that has the restaurant?
You know, again, we're not determining what's happening to anybody. It has to be the property owner who wants to participate, private enterprise. We're showing possibilities, and we're going to have them come back to us when the architect goes back and tell us what's real.
Okay.
Okay. I don't need to.
Oh, you want me to do it for you?
No. So what I'm going to talk to is the challenges and opportunity of the area of Quimby Lane. You know, the biggest challenge I think is there's businesses on Quimby Lane. And, you know, it's going to be up to private investors to come in and developers to go buy these businesses out. And if the businesses don't want to sell, they may just say no, and then it's, then we have to work around it. But we have no intention, this committee or I'm sure council is having any intention of, you know, using condemnation or amity.
We're not going to say that word.
So.
Because we have no intention.
We have no intention. So, you know, if the developer comes in, private investor comes in and goes to a business and they try to work out a deal to buy it, they agree upon a price and it works. And not that, we're not going to, you know, force that business out, that's why I want to make clear, because I think that's very important.
Can I just say something?
Sure.
We have put hundreds of hours into this presentation and the, you know, the materials that are related to it. We are your neighbors and your friends, and we're excited, and all we want to do is make this town better. And I think that we have so much enthusiasm that I think we shouldn't dwell, as Kevin was saying, on the details of it, but more the potential, and let's see what the private enterprise comes up with.
Right, exactly, yeah. And another challenge and opportunity is the topography. The topography up at Mill Street is 399 and down at 202, 202. So the opportunity that creates is we're allowed to put two underground parking levels, which is going to give us a lot of parking because it's great. Another challenge is the Mindbrook, it created development limitations. When we went into this plan, we found out that we couldn't, you know, design exactly what we wanted, we had to take into account that the brook was there and there were some flood plains. But also with that, the opportunity, it creates a good view for our parking, outdoor dining. So that's some of the opportunities that exist and the challenges. The next thing I want to talk about is the RFP, which is the Request for Proposal. The RFP that we created was reviewed by our plan, Phil, and it was approved by Jeff, our attorney, and it's a 25-page document. And it's going to be online, so anyone can go look at it. What it was intended for is the developer to be able to go and present his plan, his proposal. So everything's, every developer is coming in and going apples to apples on the plan. So it's like not, someone's bidding on one thing and not the other. And any questions and discussion will be on the Borough website. So it's all about clarity, everything's going to be on the website, you know, and nothing's going to be done, you know, behind closed doors at all on the site. And the last thing is the RFP explains that private enterprise will create the plans and supply the funding. So it's not going to cost the town anybody, the private investor's going to come in, the developer's going to come in, they're going to design their plan, we hope it's similar to what we want and in our guidelines, and they're going to be funding it. They're going to be, you know, working with the property owners, buying the property, and they're going to be putting the money up to develop the property. And that's what the RFP explains. And it's a 25-page, very detailed document.
Well-written.
Well-written. Yeah. How would you rate our RFP to other towns?
I think you have, you got the best deal. I've never, Bonnie's an experienced consultant, and as a fellow consultant, I would say it never has been difficult, or no.
Efficient. Efficient.
Efficient. You guys got a great deal, you guys got a great deal. It's a great job.
Yes.
Yeah, what's the timeline on the RFP?
Yeah, I loved it when you were about to.
I'm sorry.
So, yeah, that's, okay, yeah, all right, okay, yeah.
So, yeah, should I take it?
Yeah, it's a long one, yeah.
So after today, we're hoping that council says yes, and we'll send the RFP to lots of people before Christmas, and we have a return date on it of April 1st. Anytime anyone asks a question, that gets posted on the website to the Borough, the answer to the question. Everything's transparent, there's no special favors to anybody. We take a month when the responses come back to resuminate and look at everything, and then hopefully come back to council around May 1st and tell you what we found, what we think, you know, what could be potential next steps. Too soon to tell what those could be. So deliverables, this is really, I think, what Phil was referring to in terms of how extensively demanding the RFP is. We're not going to just kind of have developers come over and say, oh, here's a little sketch and this is what I want to do. We're going to ask them to tell us exactly who the people are going to be on their team. We want to know the phasing, the timing, we want to know the capitalization, we want to know where they're going to get their debt from, we want to know if there's anything they want the town to do, what's going to happen with the post office, somebody ask that question. So we want a lot of details, and if they're going to potentially work on all of Quimby Lane or only a part of it because the current owners of properties don't want to participate. And then the distribution I started alluding to is to, we have a list, Chris has a list of about 50 developers we want to send it to. Anybody who sees it on the website can send it to anybody they want. We want to be, get as much participation and as transparent. I got a call the other day, well, actually Anthony got the call, but there's a developer in Ohio that wants to bid on this project, which, because Kevin and I met him one day.
At the coffee shop.
At the coffee shop, yeah.
By accident.
Yeah, so the point is that this could be interesting to private enterprise, and it could be interesting to our town as the first step towards revitalization. So a quick summary, one, this is an awesome opportunity. I mean, this site is awesome, the possibility of having the post office site to entice developers is just amazing. The tax revenues will be fantastic, there are activities for everyone, there's urgency because anybody can come in and develop, you know, an 80-unit project here. We think private enterprise would be very interested in this, and the best part to the council is that we're not asking for any money. So.
So council members, are we okay going out with your RFPs and continuing on this until next spring at the timetable?
Yeah, well, I mean, I just had a few comments of, first of all, thank you very much for the hard work, the committee that's obviously gone out and done a lot of volunteering your time and strategizing about this. Thank you to the topology team for delivering on the project that we funded as well. I was reading some of the source materials that were supplied to us ahead of time, and there was one paragraph which I wanted to read because I think it encompasses my view of sort of where this came from, where I think the value is being built. So it said that the vision proposes development that does not merely build new apartment buildings or restaurants. Instead, the new development will seamlessly integrate into our existing downtown fabric and architecture while creating unique and programmable public spaces, purpose-built to draw interest and support to our nearby retailers. The development will not mean increased property, will mean, sorry, the development will mean increased property values throughout the municipality, enhancing municipal revenues and contributing to the community's overall fiscal wealth. And I think that's exactly what I heard presented tonight, and so because of that, I just wanted to say thank you and I just support this.
And I want to echo Tom, I want to say thank you to Bonnie, Jeff, Paul, Sam, and Pat's out there, and Pat Bosworth's out there in the hallway, he can't make it in. He's waving.
Amazing.
Yeah. I want to thank you all for your hundreds of hours of work on this.
You didn't come in here.
Yeah, come on in, Pat.
Yeah.
He's scared you're going to ask him a question maybe. He said you gave me enough work already. How you doing, Pat? How you doing, Pat?
Good.
But I want to thank you all, so, anyone else from council?
Yeah, I just have two questions. So as you know, your plan involves a few restaurants. As you know, in this town, we have a limited number of liquor licenses, so, I mean, what's the chances of restaurants are going to show up without a liquor license?
Well, we got, we have two potential liquor licenses, one because the post office will, you know, be transformed into something else, that's one liquor license, and then there's a person in town who has a liquor license.
How is that a liquor license? It's a post office.
There's a statue. There's a statue.
Folks, folks.
Everybody up here, Scotty, I work with Phil in topology. There's a, there's a portion of the state law, I'm going to quote right now, called the concessionaire's permit, which basically for publicly owned land, there's a special type of liquor license that can be offered called the concessionaire's permit. And it's in the RFP under the public-private partnership section that sort of outlines exactly what that process would be.
And Jack says yes.
Would I get one more for that? Chris in the bar area. Is it there an opportunity for craft breweries and/or artisan distillers where they can sell what they make or distribute what they make?
So the state did just change that law in the last like 12 or 18 months to make it more commensurate. I'm not going to be able to quote that, but that is definitely something that, you know, could be explored.
So breweries and, and wine are potentially the additional. Plus, there are some, I, I've been approached by somebody who said he'd like to open a restaurant there, and he has a liquor license that's transportable, so we know at least two.
Okay, I have another.
And also the Verge Inn, they have an extra liquor license. That's at least three.
And I have one question, mostly probably for Jack. Jack, if condemnation's involved in this at any corner, any property, who pays those costs associated with it? Is that the Borough place that or the developer?
No, usually it's the developer.
Okay.
That's it for me.
Okay, so council members, are we okay moving forward? The RFP? Mr. Donahue? Yes?
I would support moving forward, yeah.
Mr. Schmidt? Yes? Mr. DeLeo?
Yeah.
Mr. Murray? All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We'll talk over the weekend.
Absolutely.
You around or you wanting to?
Good job, you're going up. I'm going to start up here, and I'll let you follow up. I'll let you sit there.
Thank you. Thank you.
I learned something tonight. I didn't know that a federal building could have, I guess, this is another example of the government can do whatever they want to do, but, I mean, yeah. I didn't know, I was reading it, it was in there. Good catch, Diane, yeah. Just wondering, good night, was what everybody was saying.
Uh, we'll see in a minute. Yeah.
Thank you, Bonnie, thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't believe it. I mean, it's, what, 2020? I mean, let's, I know there's businesses down there, but that is kind of like the, I don't know, the lesser unified parts.
All right, we're going to move on to the second part of our presentations. I have proclamations here. First one honoring Paula Stewart. Paula, I want to come on up. And Paula served us for many, many years, and it says, whereas Paula Stewart served on the Environmental Commission from January 1st, 2010 to December 31st, 2018, and as chair from 2016 to 2018, and whereas Paula also was also a member of Friends for Green in Burnsville, and whereas Paula was a dedicated member of the Environmental Commission, always giving a lot of time and thought to the job, which made everything run smoothly, and whereas the Environmental Commission made a lot of progress due to her personal commitment and proactive nature, and whereas Paula was always very professional, savvy, and articulate, and had a lot of environmental experience she brought to the Environmental Commission and Friends for Green in Burnsville, now therefore I, Kevin Sui, Mayor of the Borough of Burnsville, hereby congratulate and appreciate Paula Stewart for all her service to the Borough of Burnsville, and proudly enter this proclamation into the Borough Record on December 10th, 2018. Paula, thank you.
Paula, thank you.
Hi, John, can you come up and run it? Mr. Stern.
It's not about the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's not about the sidewalk or the farmer's market. It's just me, 10 years of turkey. We have a second proclamation here with Mr. Sternich. And a greeting that's raised, John Sternich is a member of VFW Pope 7858, and a leader in the community in many ways, and whereas in the spring, John prepares for Memorial Day Parade and secures rides for members of VFW to ride during the parade, which we just discussed, and whereas each May, John secures volunteers to place over 1,000 flags on grave sites of fallen soldiers, and whereas also in May, John coordinates VFW members for acquiring donations from poppies, and whereas John stores flags for burning in his garage for proper ceremony of retirement flag, and, and whereas in the summer, John helps with the farmer's market on Friday nights to ensure the farmers can sit up on Saturday mornings, and whereas John attends daily and Sunday Mass at our Lady Perpetual Health Church, where he's been in person for over 50 years and brings bagels to the mounds on Tuesdays. I know a lot about that, John. And whereas John is always available to help friends and neighbors with anything they need. Now therefore I, Kevin Sui, Mayor of Burnsville, hereby recognize John Sternich as a leader in the community, and proudly enter this proclamation into Borough Record, and Mr. DeLeo is going to present you with a flag for it.
John, it's my pleasure. Service award presented to you, John Sternich, in grateful appreciation for your outstanding service and dedication to the citizens of Burnsville. Congratulations.
That's nice. I like the bagels part.
Yeah.
All right. That's nice. Yeah. Where's the other?
Um, green team, they won a, um...
No, where's the, the prospect?
All right, presentation 4C, green team, sustainable jersey, grant for trees, green team members. Wanda, Ed.
Hi, I'm Anna Fett. It's been a big part in the time. So, we're, we obtained a grant in the spring of this year for trees from Sustainable Jersey, and planted the trees, and they were cedars, and now we want you to ask for funding for sycamore trees from Sustainable Jersey, and so we need $2,500 in the spring of this year, and we're going to ask for $2,500 for 2019. And so I'm here to just ask permission to have me, funding is going to go to the Borough when they make the point, whoever it works, you know.
Sure, so it's an application, you still apply for, yes.
Anyway, the reason I'm here is to say thank you for all that you do, and we're here to plant more trees. And, so, Michael, just...
I'm the tree man.
He's the tree man.
All right, Mike.
We're putting it in floodplain areas so that we have everybody, prevents erosion and helps water farm.
All right, thank you, Wanda.
Thank you.
All right, Mike. Thank you, everyone.
I'd like just to take the floor.
Yes, Doug, Doug.
You have one more request for a grant for the Burnsville Public Works. You worked with the Urban Headwaters.
Yes.
Previously when you did the Roundup. We're looking to do the same thing, similar operation along the, the stream there, right behind the Fairmont Park.
Yes.
Some stream restoration, so we'd be grant for $780, and we encompass about 300 feet of the stream bank that we're, to the plantings with volunteers and according to the Urban Headwaters, so we'd like to go ahead and do that as well.
It's great, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right, very good, thank you, Doug.
So we're accepting, we're accepting the grant?
Yeah. Applying and accepting, yes.
Yep.
Approving and acceptance.
Thank you.
The money comes to the Borough, then Ralph will delegate, dedicate it out. All right.
I'd like to just make a statement. So with mixed emotions, today is my last, one of my last days as a Burnsville Councilman. My term is expired. I just want to thank the residents of Burnsville for electing me twice and serving this great community for the past six years. I think I served this community with honor and completed all the campaign promises that I made during that Republican primary back in 2012. Promises made and promises were kept. I just want to go ahead and thank the, the staff here, especially Ralph, Doug Walker, Joe Franny, Chief Valentine, and Mr. McDowell for all their guidance during these past six years. I'd also like to thank Mr. Pidgen, our Borough Attorney, for teaching his scientists New Jersey law. I appreciate that, and most importantly, for being a total gentleman. Jack is a total professional, and it was a pleasure working with him. In closing, it's been a pleasure serving this for the past six years. I wish the 2019 Council Mayor all the best, and, and always remember that the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few, and your vote is important, and you must consider both sides of the story, consider only the verified facts, and defend your vote when necessary. And I wish you guys all the best.
Thanks, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff. I saw you skipping around there. All right, at this, at this point in the meeting, the Mayor and Council welcome comments from any member of the public to help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard speaker shall limit their comments to five minutes. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy, an email, copy to the clerk 's office after making your comments, so may be properly reflected in the, in the minutes. Now, I want for 251 Claremont, I'm sure we're going to have comments, we have an open session on, when we get to ordinances, which will be the next item of business. Anyone for anything else in the open session? Yes, ma'am?
So I'm Melanie D. Cortira, and I live on 141 Lynde Brook Road, and I'm just up here to say thank you to the mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you to Jeff for your great example of being concerned citizens who wanted to do good things for, for our town, and that adopted you as their own. You worked hard and selflessly to make it a better town, and it's a wonderful reflection of your love of, of the town. I need to put my other glasses on because I can't see. I don't do well at public speaking, that's why I live it down. You'll be missed, and someday we will look back and appreciate all the hard work you did for so many people of this town. Thank you for your service and your love for the town. Leave knowing that you made a great difference in the stewardship of your position. Many thanks.
Thank you, Bonnie, thank you. Anybody else from the public on item not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close the open session, and we'll move on to ordinances. All right, I'm continuing the public hearing from November 26 on ordinance 18, the 1786 appropriating $950,000 from the Borough Open Space Trust Fund for the purchase of 251 Claremont Road. Open session, open hearing. Anyone from the public? Yes, sir?
Hello, Jamie Bees here, 1.4 Valentine Road. I would like to applaud Bonnie Sellers and her committee and topology for the hundreds of hours that they've invested in the downtown redevelopment project, a project which obligates the town to know, that creates no financial obligation for the town. Today, we discussed the purchase of 251 Claremont Road.
Yes.
For which I understand that there is no money, and I have a hard time understanding why the town would spend a million dollars on a piece of property, not knowing what potential plan was going to be for Peter's Tractor, that piece of land, what the cost would be, how would they utilize anything else. I mean, I, I drive by that piece of land every day, and I encourage anyone who thinks that this is a good use of the town's money, to drive up, and I will give you a tour of the property. I would say bring mud boots, because it's often muddy, because there's a fair amount of wetlands on the property, and I, I think they're much better usage for the town's money, whether it's to help facilitate rebuilding the mine, Madden Park, or in conjunction with the Quimby Lane redevelopment, or a number of other opportunities around the town.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council members, any questions or comments?
No, but I, I would clarify that we've also applied in conjunction with purchasing the property, applied for a Green Acres grant. So the cost for the property is $900,000 in this ordinance. The Green Acres would provide a grant equal to 50% of the Green Acres assessed value of the property, the Green Acres assessed value. They got two assessments, one is $875,000, and the other one's $880,000. That would mean that Green Acres would supply us with up to $440,000 towards the purchase price.
Okay.
Which would reduce the requirement from the Open Space Trust Fund, which is money that's been collected over the past 20 years, and currently is in the area somewhere above $6 million in that fund. So as we're talking about what the cost to the Borough is, it, it is a net of what the cost of the property is, less what Green Acres would supply to, in a grant, and that's highly likely that we would get that money from Green Acres, so I just wanted to point that out as we're talking about this property. It has come up before in public comments, so just to clarify.
But I, I think you're looking at a million dollars, maybe $2 million to actually turn that into a park, which would say much larger financial obligation than that, to buy a property for $900,000 compared if you had a grant in hands as Peter's Tractor. So what, what is the true cost, and what's going to be useful? So I think to proceed, you know, we didn't decide to issue RFP before hundreds of hours was spent analyzing the plan, so I don't understand why we'd push ahead and purchase this property without knowing what the cost is going to be to turn Peter's Tractor, you know, whatever park can be actually developed, so you're going to have to get the, the environmental protection involved, whether the wetlands issue on the park can be done, so I, I would think there would be more time spent on getting what can actually be done than what the cost is before buying a house.
Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir?
Mike Anderson from New Jersey, Otterline. I don't live in the town, but I've been managing the 276 Acre Wildlife Sanctuary for the last 28 and a half years, and seeing the 30 acre property which I looked at today and realizing that... the town to no, that creates no financial obligation for the town. Today, we discussed the purchase of 251 Claremont Road.
Yes.
For which I understand that there is no money, and I have a hard time understanding why the town would spend a million dollars on a piece of property, not knowing what potential plan was going to be for Peter's Track or that piece of land, what the cost would be, how would we utilize anything else. I mean, I drive by that piece of land every day, and I encourage anyone who thinks that this is a good use of the town's money to drive up, and I will give you a tour of the property. I would say bring mud boots because it's often muddy because of the fair amount of wetlands on the property. And I think they're much better usage for the town's money, whether it's to help facilitate rebuilding the mine, Madden Park, or in conjunction with the Quimby Land redevelopment, or a number of other opportunities around the town.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council members, any questions or comments?
No, but I would clarify that we've also applied in conjunction with purchasing the property, applied for a Green Acres grant. So the cost for the property is $900,000 in this ordinance. The Green Acres would provide a grant equal to 50% of the Green Acres assessed value of the property, the Green Acres assessed value. They got two assessments. One is $875,000, and the other one's $880,000. That would mean that Green Acres would supply us with up to $440,000 towards the purchase price.
Okay.
Which would reduce the requirement from the Open Space Trust Fund, which is money that's been collected over the past 20 years, and currently is in the area somewhere above $6 million in that fund. So as we're talking about what the cost to the Borough is, it is a net of what the cost of the property is, less what Green Acres would supply in a grant, and that's highly likely that we would get that money from Green Acres. So I just wanted to point that out as we're talking about this property. It has come up before in public comments, so just to clarify.
Okay.
But I think you're looking at a million dollars, maybe $2 million to actually turn that into a park, which would say much larger financial obligation than that, to buy a property for $900,000 compared if you had a grant in hand since Peter's Track. So what is the true cost, and what's going to be useful? So I think to proceed, you know, we didn't decide to issue RFP before hundreds of hours was spent analyzing the plan. So I don't understand why we push ahead with purchase of this property without knowing what the cost is going to be to turn Peter's Track, you know, whatever park can be actually developed. So you're going to have to get the vision of environmental protection involved, whether the wetlands issue on the park can be done. So I would think there would be more time spent on getting what can actually be done than what the cost is before buying a house.
Anyone else from the public? Yes, sir.
Mike Anderson from New Jersey, Odom Vine. I don't live in the town, but I've been managing the 276 acre wildlife sanctuary for the last 28 and a half years. And seeing the 30-acre property which I looked at today and realizing that it's landlocked essentially and it's inaccessible to most of the residents in town means that it's really for the benefit of just the people on the perimeter of that property. And I think it's critical. In fact, on properties that I've worked on other than in Burnsville, it's a requirement by the state that you provide parking and access for the public to open space. I just installed three parking spaces at 15-acre site in Harton Township this past year. So I don't think that not having a plan, per se, in place is any reason not to move forward with the acquisition of this property, because you can't use it if you don't have parking. All the residents in town can't use that piece of property if they can't access it. Knowing that the survey that was done earlier tonight by the other gentleman on the redevelopment of town, mentioning that 97% of the millennials and the Gen Xs are interested in open space and hiking and walking and passive recreation, and it's incumbent on the town to look forward to providing access to all of the open space properties. And the open space plan that is in place, that's one of the highest priorities, is to provide access to Peter's Track as one of the larger properties in town.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Anybody from council?
Yes, I'd like to summarize a few points as well that I see as it relates to the open space property, 251 Claremont Road. You know, the, one of the goals of the Burnsville Borough Master Plan is stated as providing open space and recreation areas. That's in the Burnsville Borough Master Plan. Additionally, in the open space master plan, which reflects the Borough's commitment to protecting its landscape and resources upon which it relies for its community's health and recreation equality of life, the goals listed in the open space master plan are to promote the permanent conservation of the Borough's unique and exceptional scenic, agricultural, and recreation lands, preserve the integrity of the Borough's sensitive environmental resources and ecosystems, provide opportunities for both active and passive recreation facilities to meet the needs of the present and future Borough residents, protect the ecological integrity of the Borough's landscape by stewarding and managing open space and recreation lands to ensure that their long-term viability, health, and sustainability, and in partnership with others, support the protection of greenways and blueways to expand contiguous open space lands. So specifically as it relates to the 251 Claremont Road property, this aligns with the master plan in the following ways. It's a unique five-acre property that connects to 30 acres of existing Borough-owned open space. It has minimal infrastructures upgrades required to be useful. It opens on... I'm going to finish what I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, please, don't interrupt.
It has minimal infrastructure upgrades required to be accessible. It opens onto underutilized Borough-owned property, and it increases the amount of green space. It's accessible to all residents. In 2018 furthermore, the community survey, which was referenced earlier today, the findings reinforced the goals of the Borough's master plan as well as of Borough's open space master plan. 94% of respondents supported the expanded additional outdoor activities. So for those reasons, I think this particular property aligns with the goals of both the open space master plan and the Borough's master plan. And furthermore, I think that it would be inappropriate for us as a Borough Council to say, "We're going to do X, Y, or Z, and that's all that we're going to do with this property." It's more appropriate to say, "It meets the criteria of both the open space master plan and the Borough's master plan, as I've already outlined, and if there's going to be any further development of that property, then we would go to a community-based, involved discussion before making any further decision." So preserving the land itself still aligns with what the open space master plan lays out, and doing further work would be something that's an outcome from a further process of community engagement about what the pros and cons of that further development would provide. So for those reasons, I'm supportive of this particular proposal, but I'm willing to listen to whatever the public wants to bring forward. Any additional concerns?
Public? Ma'am? Come on up.
I'm Amanda Paul, 50 mile, I mean 50 post Quimby Road. And I was just, I've been to a couple of these meetings, and I think that we had asked before if any, how many of the board have been up to see the property? And I'd just love to know, especially fans who have seen the property.
Okay, three.
Okay. And so you've seen, how much, how far have you walked into the piece of property?
Enough to notice plenty of parking and infrastructure to get into the property.
Oh, the piece of property you're on?
Peter's Track?
The Peter's Track.
Yeah, I've walked out years ago. I haven't been up there in a while.
Yes, it's, I think I would just...
But this was during, last week, I walked from the property all about, a little past the halfway point to the, I guess, the properties that come off Young's Road. It was rough and tumble, you know, it's, you know, I guess I'd do hiking, I didn't see anything that, I didn't see no potential there.
Okay. And then my last question is, I'm just confused. So if this ordinance, you guys, I think what I just understood, that it would be bought, you would buy the piece of property, and then it would come to the public to decide what would be done with it?
So it's my opinion, speaking for myself.
Oh.
That if we acquired this five-acre property, which I think aligns with the points of the master plan, the open space master plan and the Borough master plan that I pointed out, after we have the property, then I think it's appropriate to have an engagement with the public about how we would use this five acres, the adjoining 30 acres, if we would use them at all versus maybe we just preserve it, and it becomes preserved space. What I'm saying is there's a range of possible uses, of which we're not predetermining ahead of time, this is what's going to happen, which is why I think it would actually be putting the cart before the horse to say, "This is what is going to happen." What we want to know is we want to know what the public wants to do with the property. It's the public's open space. The 30 acres that exist today, as was pointed out by one of the commentators, that's the public's, that's the public's 30 acres. So this five acres adjoins that 30 acres, and what we, what the public wants to do with that property going forward, I think should be subject to a public engagement process.
Okay. My public, my one last question is, how much the cost of the demolition of the house and it to be leveled and to be a parking lot? And so I would love to see those numbers come into...
So right now, the parking there, when we were up there with, over the weekend, with a number of different members of the committee, sorry, of the council, the, there was parking, sufficient parking there today for about eight cars. And the, I spoke to Green Acres as well, there's no requirement that we tear the building down. So if there's, if the building could be an environmental education space, it could be for...
Drinking for kids?
It could be, no, because it's a Borough-owned building, same way the kids don't come into this building and drink. But the building could have other uses. It doesn't, it's not, it doesn't require us to knock it down.
Okay. Thank you.
That is an option, but it's not a requirement.
Melanie?
So bottom line, all the people that are opposed to this are people that live around Peter's Track, where when they bought the house, they knew that those 30 acres belonged to the town and was Green Acres. I don't, I don't understand the problem. This is something that the town has been trying to do with Peter's Track for a very long time. This isn't something that's new. I think it would be a great thing for our town, and there's a way that you can do it without imposing on the property that backs up to the houses that are there now. I live right on 202. When my, when we bought our house, part of our property line goes into the road, you know, like, that's just the way it is. I have low-income housing going down the street from me. I don't have a choice in that. It's not affordable housing, it's low-income housing. That's something that people in this town don't understand. The housing that's going in is not affordable housing for the residents, it's low-income housing. And the people that are going to be in those low-income housing are not from the town of Burnsville. They're going to be brought in from other areas of New Jersey. So you know what? Sometimes you don't have control over what goes on down the street from you or in your backyard. This is a good thing. This is not low-income housing, and you should be happy that it's not low-income housing.
Any else from the public? Yes, Paul.
Can't leave that one.
This be your final comment before Colorado, right?
Paul Stewart, 76 Millharm, he wrote, still the Chair of the Environmental Commission. When we, when we were here two weeks ago, I read a comment into the record, and one of the things I asked was the adjacent property, and apparently there was a relatively new opportunity to potentially buy that, and I guess there's a, I haven't looked at the property myself, but I understand that there's a house that is not in the greatest of shape, and it potentially could be acquired for less money. Is there still any consideration of doing that instead of purchasing this?
I don't know about, Jeff, do you know anything about a new opportunity?
I don't.
No, I don't know anything about that. Nobody's approached.
It's my understanding that the attorney for the estate was interested in perhaps discussing.
He hasn't contacted Jeff?
I had done some research.
We've been for years.
It's so interesting to show up to the Borough.
Yes.
Yeah.
So is there an opportunity for a little competition here in a market where Burnsville isn't selling too well?
I can't imagine it. We tried six years to purchase that property at full price, and still they didn't budge.
Have you asked recently? I mean, before we walked down $950,000. I mean, I'm just raising the question.
I think it's time to move on from that property.
It's not worth one last phone call?
So we've been in ongoing conversations with that, the, those property owners. I think it's a, they're represented by a lawyer, but we've not been able to come to any agreement with them at this point.
There's also a lot of engineering challenges to make improvements. First of all, there's nowhere to park. You'd have to put the parking above the property up top. You'd have to cut a road in, so the course is just being driven up with that property. The beauty of this 251, that the road is cut in this flat land for parking when you get up into the driveway. That's the beauty of the property.
Yeah. 261 is willing to sell the Borough, and it become much more reasonable. I don't want to talk about that too much in our session, but yeah.
Well, I just, you know, I'm just raising it just out of, you know, a sense of responsibility for the money, that's all, you know. We support the idea of acquisitions of open space with the Environmental Commission, and certainly access to an existing track is, you know, is a, is a good, you know, is a good thing. I mean, I don't think anybody's going to argue on our commission about that. We're just, we're just trying to get, I guess, the most bang for the buck.
Yeah, and thank you for coming up, too. I also wanted to recognize, you know, thank you for the hard work that you put together and your recommendations earlier, and the work that you put together in terms of assessing this, this property. You read into the record last time that you were here, so thank you for doing that.
We're just concerned to make sure that we follow the process to get the maximum amount of that from Green Acres.
Sure.
I used to do that for a living, sort of New Jersey water supply. In fact, I did a deal with Doug Walker, and he just...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anywhere else from the public? Yes, Mr. Reynolds?
I'm just confused.
Just state your name, and you can speak, come back there if you want to.
Yeah, it's fine. I'm just going to use 261. Is entertaining?
Jeff?
Yes.
To what extent?
Can we break on an executive session for one minute?
Yes.
Do we have new information, Jeff? Well, it's chairman, yes. I just don't want to discuss the negotiation in public.
Okay.
I think the chairman has a fair position.
All right. Entertaining motion to go into the executive session.
All right, let's move over there so that everybody...
Yeah, we were. Yeah, that's what we're going to do, Paul.
Go to the conference room.
You have a motion?
Yes, a motion.
Second, second, okay. You... I want you to move out of executive session and return to the public.
Second.
I'll move.
A second.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Back in public session, Mr. Reynolds? Okay, you had a question?
Question was, is, you guys said that 261 is not entertaining, and then now we're saying they are. Trying to get some more clarification on what exactly is going on.
Jeff, do we have a timeframe on 261 when we left conversation, et cetera? Okay. End of, end of conversation.
And it's the Green Team supports the purchase of this property based on if you don't do it now, we might never come back. And that's part of what people need to understand about open space. You have, we have the $6 million that all the taxpayers can put money into, and we need to keep buying as much as we can. Keep buying more open space in our town. This evening we talked about putting more concentration downtown, but outside the town around, we want to connect all the parks. And without this place to go in there, I'd rather not cut down any more trees in what we were, the argument that was going around here. We're going to save all the trees. We don't need to cut down any more trees. And people will hike. If you go to the Audubon hiking, we just built a new hiking trail at the Audubon last year, and most of you were there for that. I hike it occasionally. I don't run into another person when I'm hiking, you know? And so you look at the Audubon hiking spot, there could be maybe one or two cars there. So it's, if we did this here, I don't think it would be any different, you know? It'd be one or two cars, two or three people hiking, maybe on a salary you might get more, but in the middle of the week, it wouldn't be anything. So, so the Green Team really thinks this is a great idea. And I recommend the council to vote on this resolution.
Mr. Rosa.
You know, I listened to Bob here, and I think it's very interesting that there are people here that still, you know, have this, they can't wait to spend this money. As I said before, I'll say it again. There's a property down the road here called Regent's Farm. It's going to be up one day, and then you've got to, you need a lot of money to buy that. So I'd say, save your money, save your powder, keep it dry, and buy that kind of property versus wasting a million dollars on what I consider this property. In addition to that, I believe, and the borough attorney can help me with this, that there was a 1994 easement agreement between the borough and six landowners for Young's Road, am I correct?
The borough as the landowner, yes.
As one of the, as one of the six, or, I don't know, there was some group.
Recentrating.
So, we talked here, and Mr. O'Day said that there was no other access other than the, or maybe Mr. DeLeo said, there's no other access other than the right-of-way, it's not really a right-of-way, I think it's a piece of the property anyway, to go in that property off of Claremont Road. And as Jeff pointed out, I saw the topos, and it looks, it looks pretty steep, so I think they would have more time to put a road in it. But based on the 1994 agreement, does the borough have access to Peters Track via Young Road?
I think the borough has access as a property owner of letting the property road. But that doesn't necessarily include public access.
Okay. I don't know, how do you, how do you define one, the borough owns it for the benefits? The borough owns it for the benefit of the residents. And that was in, that was in the original agreement, Timothy Peters wrote in 1962.
So Jack, for clarification, we did discuss this, and just to clarify the point, what you're saying is, if we had to go up there and maintain the property by sending in a, somebody to cut the weeds or something like that, that's what our easement would allow us, the borough, to do. So we could send in, Doug could send in some people to go in and take care of the weeds or something like that. But you're saying that, you're saying from a legal standpoint, that easement on Young's Road would not necessarily say, well, we could have open access to anybody who wants to drive down there who lives in the borough?
That's right. In my opinion, it does not give the right to the borough to make it in fact a public street.
And that's not what this easement says that I have a copy of. That's not what it says, Jack.
No, it's not one of them.
Okay, it's not what, it doesn't say that, so.
I was just asking Jack for his opinion as our borough attorney.
I'll just say, it doesn't say that.
And I'll just state that I was asking Jack his opinion.
Okay, good. But it doesn't say that specifically. And is there any case law statement in New Jersey in this, in this kind of situation? There really isn't? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa. Mr. Duportier.
It's just me again. Jack, could you please explain to the people in this room why the council and you and Ralph need to go into closed session for certain things? Because I'm tired of people insinuating impropriety by the council.
All right, let Jack explain. Yeah.
The Open Property Meetings Act has certain sections, just having a meeting, holding a meeting in public. One of them is the acquisition of that property, because to discuss that, however, could jeopardize the borough's negotiating position. In fact, as opposed to the sale of property, which you do not discuss in closed session, it would have to be done by law. So as opposed to protecting interests of the borough, and in this instance, with respect to 261, I think it would affect the borough's ability to do a shit price if anyone wants to purchase that right.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Yes, sir.
John Ruprecht, 122-3 Young Road. I just have a question about the, how was, if the, if 251 was not on the borough's open space wish list, so to speak, how was that deal? Did the town approach the homeowner? Did the homeowner approach the town? Did a realtor come to the town? How was that brought to the town?
We discussed this before in a public meeting. A realtor came to the town. And I believe he approached Mr. DeLeo, right?
Mm-hmm.
Approached Mr. DeLeo, Mr. DeLeo then shared this conversation with the council as possible land acquisition, and that's where we're at today.
So at that point, after I discussed with them, they had an interest. I went up to the property to see with the realtor, and I came back, and I came back with pitches to the council. And I said, this is, I've, I've been on the council for six years, so we've been going back and forth with 261 for years. I came back and I said, this is the perfect property. Let's move forward with, and the council agreed, let's move forward. That's how it all happened.
Also, in parallel, we, we brought it to the Open Space Committee as well.
Who prefers 261?
No, the Open Space Committee recommended this, purchase of this property.
And I just had one, one more question. I had asked something about if there was going to be trails in this property, would there be some kind of buffer between the adjacent properties and Peters Track? And I believe there was something said about what a normal buffer would be in the, in the last meeting. Does anybody recall that?
I, I think, again, I mean, the appropriate point to discuss, you know, the buffers and things like that, I think would be during a process where we're talking about how we're going to develop and use this five-acre piece of property and/or develop and use the 30-acre property, which there is no plan to use that right now. But that's where community engagement, community involvement, and the appropriate size of buffers and those things are, could easily be discussed and should be discussed. And I would propose that that happens during a process where we engage the, the public and get their opinions on, on how we use this borough asset.
Anyone else in the public? Yes, ma'am.
It's me, right?
Yes, yeah, only you.
So my name is Daniel Ginti, and I live at 122-3 Young Road, -2 Young Road, and you're at 3. And I had a couple of questions. One was for this gentleman here who's looking at his papers.
Well, ask it to the council. Yes, and, yeah.
I was wondering what he was getting at, saying that, asking the attorney about the access on Young Road. Are you, is he getting at, you'll have to ask him that, but is he getting at the fact that it, it can be accessible? Or is he getting at the fact that it is not accessible?
For our attorney, explain, it's accessible to the borough if we had to do maintenance.
Like for the public, I got.
Not for the public.
My, my position is that it not make it, protect the borough's property, and it does not make it protect our public grid.
But then this gentleman was saying, but it doesn't say that here, meaning it could change?
That is his opinion.
But I was just.
Everybody's got an opinion, there's seven, there's 7,000 people.
He was reading something. Like, was that a legal document?
You'll have to talk to him about that later on.
Okay, okay, sorry. Second. The plan, going back to the plan. While I understand that you can't have a plan because you don't want to limit yourself in what you can do with that property, I'm going to go back to the safety aspect of it. This gentleman here was saying that he walked through to the borders of the property on Young Road, which I highly doubt, but, because I had dogs, I mentioned this last time, who ran through there. I could not get through. I mean, I was trying to get to my dogs. I had to go through the Peenies envy way. And I know that she has, I guess, a sort of public access there, but there are no trails there. It's all bushes.
There are a lot of deer trails. I followed, the other deer trail, from the back of the 251, I followed deer trails. They had the clippers, the clips with the brambles out of the way. They got.
You have to clip. It's not, I mean, so.
I'm going to see what it looked like, so.
Okay. But there's no trails there right now. There's, I'm sure you saw a lot of fallen trees, a lot of rotting trees that are like precariously, because you can't go. It's scary. Like, when I first heard this, I thought that would be really cool to have access out my back door, because I don't know. There's no way I would go out there. I'm also wondering in terms of that plan, like, just understanding how much it would cost to make it safe to walk out there. Because, okay, you're willing to risk your life to see, you know, what's going on out there. But what would happen if, you know, kids go out there and they just start walking around, and they fall through these rotting trees, or like, there's, there's like wetlands there that are covered by trees. You don't necessarily, don't sink down into box. I had that happen to me when I was trying to get through, and it was really scary for me, because I got stuck for a little bit, finally got out. But like, what do you do when the public's going through there? You need.
Well, the responsibility would be, it marked trails, like next to my house, I have Marine Crest and Mary Jane. And John, I know him, I don't know about you, Pat, we did a site visit. And I used to walk through there. And first of all, there are some muddy areas, but there's defined trails.
But wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't that be like kind of a sort of.
It would have to be a whole total site visit and everything then, yes.
And that's part of the plan for buffers. I mean, obviously, you're not, for the same reasons that you didn't want to walk there, most people aren't going to leave the trails, because it's just brambles and, but if the trails follows topography, and you know, you log over some windy areas, you know, it's doable. But people don't leave the trails typically, because it's just too much of a hassle.
And wouldn't people want to be able to, like, they're supposed to be connected. If there's no exit at Young Road, what's sort of the point in making trails in there, or going in there, other than to shoot deer?
I like to mountain bike, so.
Yeah, but it's not a mountain bike.
You can, you can make it that, you know. It'd be a lot of work.
That would be a lot of work and a lot of money. Again, plan before you, you know, put that money in if you don't know what.
Well, it gives an opportunity to purchase also, because, you know, we did have plans, because it was landlocked. It was kind of, not really worth our time to talk about. So here, okay, it is an opportunity. That's one of the value propositions, I think.
But I think it's awesome that you've said that, you know, the green piece, or green space areas, people would pay for half of it. That's, like, that's great to know that we wouldn't be spending quite as much. But they also, if I'm not mistaken, said last week that unless you do it within two years, you don't get any money from them.
No, that's not the development. That's the purchase. The purchase, that's not for developing this land.
That's.
Or anything. This gives us access.
Yeah, we, we could let the land lie the way it is and still keep the green acres. It would be for the development. If the green included.
That was not clear then, because people were asking that woman who spoke last week. And she said, no, we would, that would be a requirement, that you would have to be either moving forward quickly, and maybe we'd give you an extension. But there was something about a two-year, you had to be developing. Okay, well, then I'd like to.
So Jack, can you, Jack, can you just say that again, just so we're clear on that now?
Two years, Pat McFadden from Open Space, the two years would mean that we would have two years to put parking or something onto the property at 251, not to develop anything in Peters Track or anything like that.
But that's the purpose, of getting access to Peters Track. She made a point of it.
But we would have two years just to put in parking.
I don't think that's right. I think that needs to be clarified.
Well, I think the attorney probably knows what he's talking about, and he's the chairman of the.
Who was it you're referring to from last meeting?
The woman who was talking from Green Acres. She was, I mean, I don't remember her name, but there was only one person speaking.
Well, other people speak. We had people come in from out of town.
A woman, folks.
There was a fellow who said it, that you need, it's two years to do the parking for development.
Okay.
And you can buy property, you just.
We can just buy for open space purposes, yeah.
Well, I get, I, I get that.
Okay. Yeah, we're going to have to let somebody else speak soon, so.
One more thing. There's a couple of places I read in your, because I was asking about plans and stuff, and there was a couple, there was the Little Brook Sanctuary. I was wondering about the maintenance of these places. Do, do, do you, do, does, is there somebody who has to maintain, is it a public?
Little Brook is county, it's Somerset County. It's not the Borough of Burnsville.
Okay. All right. And then there was a couple of other ones that looked like they were listed under the plan that was posted online. So it goes beyond Burnsville?
It depends on what you're asking.
Well, I thought those were under the spaces that Burnsville or the borough considers part of their access of open space.
Well, that is open space, but it's owned by the county, Little Brook Sanctuary. It's in Burnsville.
We have a lot of open, different open spaces in Burnsville, yes. All right, Peter, you want to speak? Peter?
To the question of 251 not being on the open space plan, I was involved in the open space plan being done. I thought that every parcel of five acres or more was in there. There were some things, I mean, there's lots of parcels. That way we met all the criteria that we discussed with our consultants, with the council, and with planning board. So not being on there, potentially with oversight, but either way, it does meet all the criteria as Councilman O'Day has set. It does provide access at lower costs, which is some of the things you are able to consider that the public, you know, wouldn't necessarily be involved with. It is relatively flat. Number spaces, I mean, you throw out 25, I mean, I think it would probably be a lot less than that, but unless there's other, you know, intentions of using this, this site. It makes sense to have this property. The other one is, is got, you know, not making headway, then you have to go for a doctorate sometimes before you actually have all the thing. At open space, we've talked about a series of public involvement meetings, because you do want the input from the public, just like we heard earlier today. And they're putting out the RFP. They have lots of public involvement, did surveys and things like that. Typically, that's what's done when anything, so it'd be happy with open space other than just owning it for open space. We know that we have a shortage of open space based on a bunch of studies that show why people want to move someplace. It's hard to put a price on those things. It's like, you know, why advertise? Well, you think advertise because it appreciates customers. Well, it's very hard to prove that. You know, certainly I like to market, and most of them are, so I had to deal with it for, they were, were sketchy. You know, you do it because you know it's going to work. You even know it's very hard to take all those little details and point everything together. It meets criteria. This is a parcel that ought to have access. The issues of getting to another way are very complicated and probably far more costly than this piece of property. In terms of trails, myself and a bunch of volunteers, I've cut some of the trails to the line before, where it goes from mine, mine broke all the way up to Round Top. The Round Top section of the lower wood is still under development, because we need some assistance from the borough for cutting some of the trees that fell through the storms. But, you know, a lot of these things, people do this for free. The borough probably should have somebody kind of check on it periodically, but, you know, most towns don't do that. So in terms of cost, if you just leave alone, just not really, this cost, it's very, very nominal. And we have volunteers, we've gathered some other groups that want to help out with this thing. So it meets all the criteria. It is certainly a, a local opportunity that people have been concerned about for years. The matching funds with the state, based on the appraisal, which you already heard. What you haven't heard is that they will also go up to 10% of the acquisition price. They're priced based on the appraisal for any demolition of the property. So that means if it's, if the appraisal says, you know, 880 for simple numbers, that'd be 440. We'd take the 440 from the state to match any, any expense. Typically, in other properties we looked at, the ceiling was, you know, if there's.
Peter, you got one minute.
Problems, you'd be, you know, you might be a hundred thousand dollars, but basically our houses were 30,000 dollars. We appropriated about 50, but would appropriate 50, but our houses were 30,000 dollars. For demolition and closing pools and wells and all that kind of stuff, if that was the choice. So it's really not a huge amount of money that we do. We have to give offset from the state, you know, it's part of the state. One time, this, this.
All right, Peter, you got to wrap it up. Thank you. Yes, Wanda.
Wanda McSeventisey. I think access to nature is important to young people and old people and old people. And I think that this beautiful landscape is not accessible is, is really a shame. And I applaud you for considering that there should be access to nature for children, for families. I think it's a huge asset to the community to have access to more of nature. If you're afraid to be in the woods, that something's going to happen, then keep your kid in front of an eye ball. But if you want them to create, be creative and imaginative and healthy and vibrant and curious, then have them expose a little bit more nature. So thank you for.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Ned?
Hi. 122-2 Young Road.
Can you please step up here so he can get the recording?
I just said your name, not that we don't know you, but just for the record.
Look, I'm Ned Ginti. I live 122-2 Young Road. It's my third meeting here, and I'm against it. And I'm against it for two reasons, okay? Yes, I live next to it. Yes, I have three young children, and they're the meanest world to me. My family has lived in this area since 1992, frequent users of the Audubon Society. I'm the president of the youth football program, and I am very much involved with all the other youth programs that want and need better athletic facilities. To me, this is all about what the priorities are for this town. The study said, elect, before in the first part, 1,100 responses, 94% said outdoor activities in the downtown area was important to them. Downtown. This is not downtown.
I'm actually not sure that's exactly what the survey question was.
It was exactly what it said. It was right on there.
That's what they said there, but in an earlier version, that's not what it said.
That's what it said there. That's what we saw, okay? And making it convenient, making it convenient, okay? It's not very convenient for people that are living downtown or all the development want to be downtown. There are great plans. I applaud you for having that, that consulting group. We would like to see that for this, too. That's just very simple, okay? You have passive space in those plans. That's fantastic. What upsets me is that the priorities that we laid out in the youth football program, which we invited, and other youth sports programs participated in, what were their biggest concerns? Was the existing recreational facilities, existing, did not meet their standard. And they felt that was hurting their, their, their values and their property values. That was hurting young people from coming here. And guess what? We are the young people, okay? We are going to be here for the next 10 or 15 years.
Not yet, Jeff. Not yet, Jeff. Because, let me explain something. The money you're talking about is a separate pool of money. You're talking about upgraded recreation facilities. That comes out of our capital budget.
That's what.
This money's coming out of our open space money, which cannot be used for.
But Jeff, Jeff, it was made very clear in the last meeting that the maintenance of what would become these walking trails or biking trails will come from the space or from the budget from this.
It'd be a very small amount.
But the point is, it is going to be another competitive property for the athletic facilities of our kids, the baseball fields, the lacrosse fields, the football fields, other things that are subpar at this point. John Ruprecht brought up a great idea the last time, is let's look at the open space fund and see what else it could be used for. Have a referendum. And if the town doesn't want it, the town doesn't want it, okay? But at least it's a vote, okay? But the point is, there are other priorities that this town needs more for the existing people that want to stay here for the next 10 or 15 years, that have little kids, that want to have great athletic facilities. And this is not a high priority. I lived there, okay? I've lived there for seven years. We walked away from two properties in Chatham and in Mendham that had these types of facilities next to them. And I had friends call me up and say, "Do not buy those properties, because you can't control what happens after night." We said, John brought it up at the last meeting, he spoke with some of the, some of the law enforcement people in town, that they're not going to police it. I have three young children, okay? They're 11 years old and younger. And no one is going to tell me that that's, that I'm going to feel safe, because it's an enclosed ring space, okay? You can call it open if you want. There's no fluid movement through there. It's, it's enclosed. And you can't tell me that you've walked all through it. The last two meetings, I invited people on the council, "Please call me. Let's do it together. Let's go through it together, and you'll see what we see." And that's also what I'm upset about.
You got one more minute, then I have to give it to the other people.
One minute's fine. All I ask of this council, whether it's the deer hunting, whether it's the athletic facilities, whether it's this, just give us a call and say, "Ned, John, Jamie, Danielle, whomever, let's walk it together." Before we do all this, let's sit down and go over the pros and cons. Because it makes us feel, as residents, whether it's about the athletic facilities or this, whatever, let us be partners in it. Not after the fact, not after the plans were made or after the purchase was made. Let's do it before, so we can feel like we're a part of this process, instead of being told what was done, and then hope that it's going to be, you know, according to the safety and, and utility plans that we want. Maximum usage of our recreational facilities, existing facilities, is what is the most important thing in this town. And there are hundreds of towns, residents that can be using other facilities and get revenue from them in the case of athletic fields and stuff.
All right, man, I'm going to have to wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Yes, ma'am. Come up, please.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Carrie Hazelton from Lyman Road. I just wanted to get a sort of a straw poll of the rest of the council based on what Mr. O'Day had said about.
Can't take a straw poll. They'll vote officially tonight.
Oh, okay. That's not, not an official straw poll. I just wanted to kind of get the sense of whether the rest of the council agrees with Tom and what he was saying.
They'll, they'll, they'll say with their neighbor vote tonight on this, on this ordinance.
It wasn't about his being in favor or not.
Okay.
It's about how he said that he felt like when it came to time to delineate the uses of the property, that you would want to come back and talk to people, that it wouldn't be something that would be done, since we don't know what the plan is.
Yeah, we're not taking a straw poll. We don't take straw polls. If, if any council members want to say they agree, they can agree publicly, but.
As to be on agenda, if, if the property does get purchased and it's, it's purchased and has to be put on the agenda, they ask what they're going to do about it.
Okay.
And you'll have different councils members sitting here.
I don't think any straw poll for that. I think that's just the nature of how it would progress.
Yeah, I just hope, you know, I can know whether anybody wanted to comment on that and follow up on what he said, I guess is what I'm asking.
Also, I just would point out that what I was talking about as far as further engagement before we decide anything to do with the property beyond just the acquisition of this five-acre parcel was a recommendation by the Open Space Committee that we engage the public or that we have the public input about any other further uses other than just acquisition of this five-acre piece of property.
Okay. Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Council members? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing. I want to make, um, Jack, we have a different appraisal, correct? Should we have to adjust the price on this or just?
No, as I explained, the price does not change. We agreed to the $100,000 purchase price. And Mr. O'Day explained, that will affect the amount of money you have between acres, because the two appraisals are for 880 and 75, so you wouldn't get the full 50%.
Something like 48 and a half percent or 49%.
That's, that's right.
Okay. I want to obtain a motion to pass on final reading as adopted by the public.
I would like to move.
Moved by Mr. DeLeo.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. O'Day. Anthony Rollpool.
Mr. DeLeo?
Yes.
Mr. Donnie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Abstain.
Yes. What I would like to say, though, is that I trust in this council and staff and the future council and staff for 2019, we are going to do the very best process on this. And in the past, you may feel like we're doing things without asking for input, but that's exactly what we're doing here. I'm also 100% in favor of open space acquisitions because of conservation and the environment. And one phrase that's always in my head, and Wanda almost said it, "No child left inside." Our kids are not getting out as much as they need to. Our adults are not getting out as much as they need to. And in the open space plan. That's a plan I can live with, and I think if you live in that surrounding area, you'll enjoy it, too. We're not trying to disrupt your life. We're not trying to make anything worse. We just have a vision of a loop and, you know, something that the entire community will enjoy. So I hope you share that vision with me.
All right, thank you for seeing the motion passes. order. Mr. Oza, please. Mr. Oza. Mr. Oza, we're continuing with the meeting.
Do it on the home.
Thank you. Yeah, we're continuing with the meeting. No talking in the public, all right? Yeah, you...
No, I'm not saying word.
No, you weren't. I'm hearing things.
No.
All right. Open a public hearing, ordinance eighteen seventeen eighty-seven, and ordinance reducing the minimum area required for discharging of a bow and arrow, supplementing and amending chapter three of the borough code entitled Police Regulations.
I have a question. The chief walked out. Yeah.
Anyone from the public? Peter, you wish to be heard on this? Get going, Eric.
Yes, okay. Someone going here and managed on my property for a long time and only recently went to the police, they went to the police station because of some damage to some of their equipment after, you know, how many years it's been going on. And then I started to read the ordinance and the way it written really is complicated in other places, but most importantly, it's a council typically goes by straight guidelines on most laws like noise and housing and all these different things. So, the law was changed about five years ago. I'm not sure if these act or yours. And I think that it probably wasn't updated because the distance for throwing arrow was cut from four hundred and fifty feet to, except by schools and public buildings, to a hundred and fifty feet. It's a very reasonable amount because you're about to be in a tree, you're shooting down, you're not shooting out in the distance, and you're never likely to have an arrow in the air. So, anyway, it's more, if you can look at state code, they have the state, I think, probably has done a lot of examination of safe distance for this, so it makes a lot of sense to...
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else from the public? Council members?
This was a request from...
The hunters.
What's his name?
Yeah.
Pat Riley?
Yeah.
This was a while ago.
Yeah, it's been going back.
Kevin, come back.
Yes, Ed.
I just want to remind everyone that right now, there is a deer management program in town that prides itself on safety, and I think it has to be released, chief, about that. And I would just hope that there's some way of making this available to more people. It still maintains the same amount of safety because right now, the hunters that are hunting on town properties have to erect a deer stand fifteen feet in the air. And if it's just open to people who have on their own property, it may be that they may see a deer when they go out in the morning and say, "Oh, I don't think I need to climb that stand. I can get him right from here."
Then they're in violation of law if they do that, so...
Yes.
Yeah.
Who's gonna enforce it? So, if there's some way, that's what I'm asking, is there some way to make the ordinance also have some public safety measure to it, I think would be advisable.
Well, have the state guidelines.
Well, the state regulates hunting.
Yeah.
And there's preempted regulations with hunting. This goes with district firearms, which is the way around the state preemption. You really can't do anything if it's late date. We're running out of time issue. I mean, it certainly can be looked at.
Yeah. Scott?
Yeah, I was talking to Pat, and, you know, we're trying, the goal is to bring back the state regulations. If the hunter does something like that, they're gonna be out of, you know, they're gonna be creating an illegal action, and they have to register with the police. So, they come in, they want to hunt a property, the owner has to give them permission, and all the information is provided to the police. So, we know who's hunting this property, it's legal. And again, it's just to bring it into a part of what's going on in the rest of the state. You'll see in the ordinance that we have several properties that are being hunted, a hunt club that don't need the requirement.
Sorry, how does that happen? They have special permission?
It's not a partial requirement, it's that right now, it says that they can't be combined.
Okay.
If there's something that involves firearms, it's restricted for bows, and it has to be shot from a home stand.
So, a homeowner just gets a license and then they're allowed to hunt on their own property?
If they're registered, they're allowed to play it.
And they meet the requirements.
And they need to... Yeah.
Yeah.
Hell, you're on the... Don't you have to register to do any... Register with the police, right? To allow something else to happen. No, well, what about the homeowner?
All right, folks, it goes to the council, not all over the place. All right.
So, the question then is, what about the homeowner? Because you said what Pat Riley said.
What is, Jack? What do we have here?
They're not registered.
All right, what's the exact question?
And the homeowner just get up in the morning and...
A homeowner could come out with a gun in the morning and just shoot a bird in the tree, you know? And then he's gonna be reprimanded by the police, so he'll... Yeah.
Farmer's...
Yeah. All right. Thanks, Ed. Anyone else from the public? All right, I want to entertain, I'm gonna close the public hearing, entertain a motion to pass on final reading as adopted and published. Have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Delio, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
All right, a public hearing on ordinance eighteen seventeen eighty-eight, and ordinance setting two thousand and nineteen salaries and hourly rates for non-contractual employees. Anybody from public? Counsel? Mr. Oza?
What was the average increase of two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen?
In salaries or budget?
For this ordinance. What was the difference?
Ralph, what do you...
Two percent on the nose. Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to pass on final reading as adopted and published.
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. Mayor, I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Delio. Roll call, please.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
All right, I want to entertain a motion to move that ordinance eighteen seventeen eighty-nine, ordinance amending shoppers' parking spaces in Mount Airy Road parking lot and amending section eight dash four of the borough code, be introduced by title passed on first reading published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning eight AM on Thursday, December twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Mr. O'Day.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. All in favor?
All right.
I have a...
Opposed? Yeah. Public hearing is the next meeting.
Well, should we make the public hearing December twenty-seventh at eight AM, or should we...
You can't carry it to New Year. You have to...
I will not be available for that.
Only because I saw some things in here that we should probably look in more detail. Should we do that after the change? Or is it just...
No, if you made substantial changes in the ordinance, you'd have to adopt it and make certain changes next year.
And this change is just adding six spots in M.
That's right.
So, the other thing, could we, there's a page that talks about handicap spots. Could we fix that, too, because it's, like, way outdated? It says, like, this still has a handicap spot.
I have a suggestion because of the calendar, right?
So, do that as separate.
Yes.
Okay. Then, okay.
All right, okay. All right.
Can I just ask one quick question as well, in terms of the final language for the ordinance to be published for December twenty-seventh? Are we, if we chose to, can we put, like, painted signs on and say, you know, "This is shopper parking"? It doesn't need to be in the ordinance to do that. We could just decide to do that?
That's right. Okay. What you're doing is not enforcing the ordinance. It's currently in effect. Pending adoption of this one, yes.
Yeah, yeah. I won't even be able to call in. I'll be in a completely different time zone.
Okay, that's all right. So...
We need three votes to adopt.
Let me do it again. All in favor?
All right.
All right. So, how many people do we have for December twenty-seventh? Available for December twenty-seventh?
All of us except for Chris.
This person will be in...
At eight AM?
The vacancy will have to be filled by now.
Well, I actually have a point discussion.
Yeah, let's stick with this first. And we can talk about that.
Two, three, four, you have five.
We got five of us here. All right. So, all in favor, Chris, you're gonna abstain? Okay.
I will not be available.
All right.
I'll be in India for the wedding.
There you go, nice.
Oh, my God. You're really gonna be a different time.
All right, resolutions. Resolution eighteen two five seven to eighteen two six seven. Anybody have any questions? You want to pull anything?
I don't.
No.
All right, seeing none, entertain a motion to move.
Move.
Moved by Mr. Schmitt.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
Mr. Delio?
Yes.
All right, item six C, special meeting to address council vacancy.
So, I put this on the agenda because I wanted to discuss the idea that we might not have a quorum on December twenty-seventh, and if we have a vacancy to fill, you know, do we need a quorum? So, if we have, if we have four members, or sorry, yeah, four members that can be available eight AM on December twenty-seventh, maybe it's not an issue.
Yeah, four council members and myself, so...
So, Jack, can you go through that process? Can you replace the council vacancy?
Mr. Sullivan's resignation effective December first, which means that the Republican Municipal Committee has until December sixteenth to submit three names from the same political party, and then the council has until December thirty-one to pick one of those three names.
On December sixteenth, are those names, you know, are they public? So, people will know?
Yeah, they'll be submitted to the borough clerk, and he'll let us know.
Is there...
Is there a screening plan, Skip?
We will be, we will have you named by the sixteenth.
All right, good.
Is there a screening meeting for the Republicans? Is that a date plan?
That's his business. That's committee business, yeah. Anyone else? Okay, so, we're okay doing it on the morning meeting?
It's okay for me.
All right. All right, six D, Aflac. Ralph, anything on this, or is it disinformational?
Yeah, I mean, remember, some of the things that Martin wants to have been contacted and want to listen to a presentation made by his company, a deferred compensation package.
Yeah, for injuries and, yeah.
That we wanted to wish a blessing on that.
That's fine. I don't have a problem. Anybody have a problem with it?
You're okay with it, though?
They've been in before.
They individually negotiate with the vendor if they want to participate or not. And then it would come right out of their salary, so, whatever.
So, it's optional at the cost of the employee?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Do you roll call?
No. All right, correspondence. Seeing none.
You know what? I want to, although Mr. McDowell's not here, maybe you relayed a message. My street, my Mount Road, has been completed. It's at least my section of it, and it came absolutely beautiful, so Doug passed that message on that one. I think most of the residents are very happy. It's a great improvement.
All right, I want to entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session. Move.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. O'Day. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Eyes happy.